You're all set.
All right.
Good evening and thank you for remotely attending tonight's city council meeting. The camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight, the platform we are using as a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click the button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand with pledge. Pledge allegiance, flag, America.
For the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God.
For the liberty and justice of our home.
A little out of sync there at all. Kathy, could you please call the roll? And Mike Powers is asked to be excused. Is there a consensus to excuse Mike Powers?
I have to call him.
Yes.
Yeah.
I got ahead of myself.
Mayor Scally?
Here.
Councillor Dillabah?
Here.
Councillor Fisher?
Here.
Councillor Kennedy?
Here.
Councillor Powers asked to be excused.
Is there a consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Reish?
Here.
Councillor Scampereley?
Yes.
Quorum present.
We do not have any presentations tonight. We do not have any public hearings tonight. So this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone attending remotely would like to address the council. Please you, please you, the raise hand feature.
I do not see any hands raised.
Give it one second.
Sure.
And this brings us to correspondence.
We have three letters.
Three.
Dear Mayor and Council, my husband Tim and I inquired about the acquisition of Paper Cherry Street back in August, and we have yet to receive a definitive answer. We maintain our interest in the acquisition of Paper Cherry Street, and we are looking for direction from City Council. We own the property adjacent to Paper Cherry Street on the south side. If we were to acquire Paper Cherry Street, we would certainly continue to allow the city a right of way. Thank you for your time, Katie LeBlanc. To Augsburg City Council, I am writing to you today in reference to the city's decision to close Lockwood Arena until January 16th. I realize that the city has concerns about COVID-19 and its spread in the community. Understand that as a parent and educator, I have the same concerns. However, I believe that we need to be doing everything we can to give the children of our community some sense of normalcy and purpose during this extremely trying time. Our schools are open, and I think that we need to get this rink open and get our kids involved in figure skating and hockey again as soon as possible. Last year's hockey season was cut short due to COVID, and this year's season has been delayed. Figure skaters never got to put on their final show last year. It may not seem that opening the arena would have much of an impact, but I assure you that it would. Our children need to have this physical activity to keep their minds and body healthy. They need to have something to look forward to in this uncertain time. Both the Augsburg Figure Skating Club and Augsburg Minor Hockey have reinforced to their members the safety protocols that are in place for the Lockwood Arena. In fact, some parents were upset by how stringent those protocols were when the season started. But I think we can all agree that we will do whatever is necessary to get our kids skating again. Know that I would never do anything that I thought would put my children at risk. I believe that my child is just as safe to attend hockey practice as he is to attend school. I urge the council to reconsider the delay in opening Lockwood Arena. Thank you for your time and consideration, Karen Wirt. To Augsburg City Council, my letter to you today concerns the city's decision to extend the closure of Lockwood Arena until January 16th. This will have a negative effect on the children in our community that have been looking forward to the reopening of the rink so they can resume their practices. Listed below is a summary of the reasons I believe that we need to get Lockwood Arena open as soon as possible. Other rinks in our area remain open even though infection rates in their communities are similar to Augsburg. Lockwood Arena is very clean, and the staff does an excellent job of cleaning and disinfecting it to keep it safe. Players follow strict protocols for COVID safety. These children are in school on a daily basis. I don't believe that hockey practice is more of a risk than attending school. Players need this physical activity as an outlet for energy and a way to de-stress in this trying time. There are players who have purchased new equipment for this season that they may outgrow by next year and never get a chance to use. Lockwood Arena should be treated the same as other, I'm sorry, Lockwood Arena should not be treated the same as other city buildings. Its use is unique, and its safety protocols are easier to enforce in this controlled environment. Are there any cases of COVID that can be traced to exposure at hockey at Lockwood Arena? I believe the answer is no, as I have never been informed as a member of the minor hockey board of such an exposure. I believe that we are keeping our players as safe as possible by enforcing the strict safety protocols that have been given to us. I believe that we need to give these kids something to look forward to and a way to relieve stress and get some exercise in a safe environment. I believe that these players need some sense of normalcy in their lives. I believe that we as a community can do that for these kids if we get the arena open and get them back on the ice as soon as possible. If you're not going to reopen the Lockwood Arena, then consider an outdoor rink in the parking lot like we had a couple of years ago. Ultimately, I urge you to reconsider your decision to close the arena until January 16th. This would be doing a great service to the children of Augsburg. Paul Wirt, Vice President, Augsburg Minor Hockey. That's all.
Next, we have our consent agenda. That declines as enumerated in the general fund warrant number 22-2020 in the amount of $1,003,385.25 and library warrant number 22-2020 in the amount of $24,405.24 and capital fund warrant number 22-2020 in the amount of $1,966,345.59 and community payment fund warrant number 22-2020 in the amount of $76.02 and community renewal fund warrant number 22-2020 in the amount of $15,200 as audited, the and the same hereby are ordered paid, I so move.
I'll second it.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Um, Mayor, I just have a couple of questions. On Friday, I sent her an email to Mr. Jelly requesting the lawyer bills that were referenced in here for copies of them, and I never received the response back. I was just wondering if you received my email and how come I wasn't able to get copies of the lawyer bills?
Councillor, it looks like we've had a problem with our email. Andrea just told me a second ago she sent one and got it kicked back, so I've got to check. I didn't get it. But the answer is, like I told you before, I've got, I keep all the legal invoices in a binder. I can, I can get them to you. You can pick up that binder anytime it's, it's up to date from the previous month. So the answer is yes, and I'll, I'll check on, excuse me, what happened to your email.
Okay, thanks. I just, I'm just with the kids, we've been staying home quite a bit. So I just, and with City Hall being closed, that's why I sent the email. But next time I will, if you could just email them to me, I would appreciate it.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you.
I'll second Kathy.
Okay. Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabah?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Councillor Scampereley?
Yes.
Approved.
We, we have three appointments tonight. To make a motion to, to appoint Councillor Fisher, Councillor Kennedy, and Councillor Reish to two, two-year terms on the audit committee. Terms to begin January 11th, 2021, and end December 31st, 2022, I so move.
I'll second it.
Kathy, call the roll.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabah?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Councillor Scampereley?
Yes.
Approved.
We, next week, we'll vote a motion to appoint one individual to a three-year term on the planning board. Term will begin January 11th, 2021, and end December 31st, 2023. I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Ryan Frary to that position.
I would second that.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Councillor Dillabah?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Councillor Scampereley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Approved.
And last, we will need a motion to appoint one individual to a three-year term as an alternate as the planning board to begin January 11th, 2021, and then December 31st, 2023.
Mayor, I'd like to, Mike Weaver, get that position.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. And Kathy, would you call the roll?
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Councillor Scampereley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabah?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to items for conference. First item of business will be read by City Clerk Kathy Jock.
It's a resolution deniating two additional regular city council meeting dates for 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I guess I'll second it.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
So this, this is for the summer, right?
Yeah. Kathy, would you call the roll?
Councillor Kennedy?
No.
Councillor Reish?
Um, I just soon, you know, call for those meetings if, if they're needed. Uh, I'm not sure what other people want to do, so I'll say no for now.
Councillor Scampereley?
No.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabah?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
I would say, um, I, I, I don't see a problem with an extra meeting a month in the summer. If for some reason somebody can't be there, um, obviously, we're, we show a lot of latitude as far as absentees. So, um, getting, I was elected to do a job, and whether or not it's two a month or, or for my convenience in the summer, I think that the people that put me here deserve two meetings a month, so I'm voting yes.
Be nice.
Okay. Our next item of business will be read by City Clerk Kathy Jock.
This is a resolution to adopt the retention and disposition schedule for the New York Local Government Records, LGS-1, for records retention. Did you want me to read it, Mayor?
Yeah.
That, that's fine. I just had a question. So Kathy, that's all just standard stuff?
That is correct. Councillor Reish, and the four existing retention schedules expired on January 1st, 2021. In the past, there had always been four. The New York State Archives revised the state government's local government retention level, and now there's simply one schedule for all levels of local government.
Okay.
Mayor, we need a motion.
Um, I'll make a motion for that.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Second.
I, I would wait to see if anyone else is gonna make a motion tonight, so I would give them a chance. Is there any discussion?
Wait, what?
Kathy, would you call?
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Councillor Scampereley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabah?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Historian Julie Madlin.
Hello, I have a resolution to authorize the placement of a Marion and Julius Frank Women Suffrage Sign at City Hall. Whereas Julius Frank was the mayor of Augsburg from 1914 to 1918, and whereas Marion and Julius Frank organized suffrage meeting at the Opera House in Town Hall, and whereas Marion Frank founded and served as president of the Augsburg Political Equality Club, which promoted women's right to vote in northern New York, and where a city historian Julie Madlin through the William G. Pomeroy Foundation has obtained this sign at no cost for the city of Augsburg to commemorate the National Centennial of Women Suffrage in 2020. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Augsburg City Council authorizes the placement of a Marion and Julius Frank Women Suffrage Sign at City Hall. And I'd like to add that this sign will put Augsburg on the national votes for Women's Trail, um, which has over 2,000 sites nationwide, and hopefully, that's gonna increase our tourism.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. That's fantastic. Thank you very much, Julie. You're welcome.
I just like, I just think it's, I just think it's wonderful that local people played an active role in that movement. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Julie. Um, any further discussion? Kathy, would you call the roll?
Councillor Scampereley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabah?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Approved.
I just have one question quick while we have Julie on. What is an approximate ETA for the sign to arrive and be installed here in Augsburg?
Um, it doesn't take too long for me to get the check once it's approved. It's usually a couple of months. Obviously, with winter, we're not gonna be able to install it right now, but hopefully, pretty, by summer, we'll have it in.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
This brings us to old business. Does anyone have any old business?
Yes, I could.
Yes.
He is Councillor Reish.
Yeah, I just, um, I wanted to bring up police reform again. Can you hear me all right? And, um, just looking for an update on that and, uh, and a schedule for public participation. There's supposed to be an awful lot of public participation in doing that, and, uh, it's weeks, it's weeks away, and, uh, so, yeah, if you could just give me an update, I appreciate it.
Yep, it's done in my old business here as well. Councillor Reish, so the first meeting, the steering group will be held this month. I'm trying to get it for the end of next week. While the steering group currently consists of myself, the police chief, the school superintendent, and representative from the DA's office. I'm looking for one other city executive leader to serve on the steering group. I prepared in accordance with the governor's instruction and working with our legal counsel, what I think will be the framework for this group to then start determining when those public events, Councillor Reish, that you mentioned, will be scheduled. Also, I see is doing an online questionnaire for people to participate that direction. And then from there, I also expect that we will establish at least two or three focus groups depending on the topics that are identified by the initial committee meetings. So I think at the next city council meeting, we'll have a presentation that'll have our timelines, who our exact participants are, and when the events will be scheduled to keep us in compliance with submitted Albany by the first of April.
Very good. Anyone else?
Um, I've got one. Um, we had a correspondence tonight on the Cherry Street request. Um, was there anything done on putting in the right of way for the city? Have it written in before we see that again?
So, Councillor, we'll, we'll have that on the agenda for the next meeting as well. There's some other staff questions that I want to get answered and put together. I'm also trying to come up with a, a template we can use and something that we can give to, to the staff so that as these come in, we've got a little bit better, you know, grasp on what, what council will be looking to push through and what council will be looking not to. What I don't want to do is, is do a lot of work. We've got another request that's just recently come in, and I really, I think it's gonna be important that I've got some kind of left and right guidance from council on what we want to invest staff, time, and potential costs, you know, like getting surveys down or maps built, et cetera. So we'll have, we'll have the next one ready, and then I hope also to have the template at the next meeting so we can present that to you as something we can use for some initial guidance on things that we can perhaps approve for moving forward in the process or, or, you know, just simply say that the city is, is not willing to entertain that now.
Sounds good. And just as long as the city's interests are taken care of first.
I said.
Anyone else? Anyone else for old business?
We knew with Lockwood Arena.
I wanted to mention the arena. I know we've had quite a few, uh, people around the community have been talking to me about trying to get that open. Like to, I'd like to see the arena open, uh, before the 16th. And I think that it sounds like hockey has an investment here. They, they understand protocol, and I, I don't see why we can't open it ASAP.
You know, I, oh, go ahead.
I, I think that, um, under the current guidance, if the state allows it, and there is guidance in place, whatever that may be, 50% occupancy, um, I'm, I'm okay with that as long as we're following the, the state and county guidance.
Yeah, I, I echo, I echo both of those. I think that, um, the parties that are both wanting to use the figure skating and minor hockey are, you know, responsible. They're implementing, they're, they're following guidelines and they're implementing, ensuring that they're being followed, um, especially with schools being open. I think, um, while I'm generally one to err on the side of caution, um, I think that opening it and having it with responsible individuals inside, um, I think that's something that we could move forward with as well. I would like to see it open.
Are the schools presently open?
Go, go ahead. I'm sorry, Councillor, say again.
Are, are the schools presently open or are they remote?
They're hybrid currently. So like my kids go to school this week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, in person, and then they will do remote learning on Thursday and Friday. So my kids are currently in school.
Okay. Is their ice rink open?
They don't have anything.
So let me just, uh, just to speak from the operational side. I, I don't, there's no, there's no obstruction coming from City Hall on this, and, and I certainly understand the letters that came in tonight and the multiple emails and phone calls that we've received. My decision to continue the closure for one more week and evaluate, I've typically been evaluating the statistics on Wednesday, Thursday, consulting, um, you know, with, with other experts and the school superintendent as necessary. You know, the school rink isn't open for a reason. The school's not playing sports for, as the superintendent has, is that he's not playing sports for a reason, and then we're allowing sports activities. And we kept our rink open, you know, longer than other places did coming into the end of the year. So I'm, I'm gonna look at, I'm gonna continue the practice unless I receive different direction tonight. I'm gonna evaluate the, the statistics and talk with the public health experts on the Wednesday, Thursday timeframe and, and continue to make decisions that I think are in the best interest of public safety. Keep in mind, St. Lawrence County has one of the highest rates of COVID now in the state, and Augsburg has amongst the highest, if not the highest, rate in the county. So I, I understand everyone's concern. I also think we all can appreciate we have got to put this COVID to bed and allowing some opportunity for, uh, for social distancing and other practices and the vaccine to get in the, in the community post the holiday time, and we know we had a lot of people gathering. I just think it's been, uh, it's been smart business for us now. So I, I hear everybody's, uh, you know, everybody's concerned. I, I appreciate all. Again, we're not wanting to keep the Lockwood closed one day longer than it has to be, but really, right now, we've got a lot of COVID in this area, in particular in Augsburg. We've had, you know, members of the city staff, their children, uh, with recently tested positive. So I, I've just, uh, all, all those things weigh into, to the decision, not the least of which is wanting to keep kids from, from having something, something to do.
Do the state, does the state allow it? Are there other rinks open?
There are. There are rinks open and there are guidelines. Uh, again, this, uh, you know, the, the movement of the, the exposure rates has been somewhat fluid since the beginning of COVID. Uh, we did, you know, real well for a while, and then, uh, you know, as you recall, sometime in the fall, our rates started to, to spike, and they've been, you know, fairly high ever since. So, um, I think it's really, this just continues to be a day-by-day play. Albany can assess where, what the conditions are in every part of New York State. The governor has stated on a number of occasions, local officials have to, to do their jobs.
And this brings us to.
Wait, sorry, I got, so I just wanted to update counsel on some other old business items that we've been working, just so everybody hasn't forgotten them. The St. Lawrence psychiatric, psychiatric center property, uh, it was at one point of discussion that we received grant funds from Senator Patricia Rishi's office. Uh, we are back in a reinvigorating effort, um, and I will have details for council, I hope, if not the next meeting, the, the one after. Sands tax, uh, and I'm sure everyone's tracking it, but just so we're all, all clear, we expect a decision at the December, or the January 25th Finance Committee meeting of the county. Department updates, as you've all requested, we'll go back to making sure that we have the department updates, and they'll be posted on the website on no later than the 15th of every month, starting with January. And, uh, the marketing efforts, we've got the request for proposals out on the street now. We've got just a few more days before that closes to begin marketing the Bronfield property area, which will involve a good portion of our waterfront. And that's a, it's a real big project that we've, uh, we've got a lot of, lot of effort into, and I hope will be the catalyst for the beginning of, um, of our marketing and, and sales of the waterfront properties. Uh, to go along with that, Andrew and I have been conducting meetings with the county for the better part of a couple of months now, um, working with them to kind of form a collective group on how we can work together to get the properties that still need to be cleaned up and getting them back on the tax rolls. So the county attorney has been very helpful in, in meeting with us. I think our discussions are, are progressing. Uh, we've set our sights first on, um, the information, details, and what we can do to continue to get the shade roller property cleaned up. Um, as it sits between two highly developed properties right now, one owned by us and one owned by a private party. So I just wanted to give an update on that under old business. These are all the topics that, uh, you know, that are open, but I, we'll have some closure on some soon.
Thank you, Steve.
Mike, I got one more. Mike, um, can we get an update on the ready project? As, as far as the, um, like design? Um, a couple of months ago, there was a meeting between the engineer and the city manager. I think Councillor Reish may have been there in the planner. Um, there was some concerns about design that people had expressed. I didn't, I wasn't there, but, um, I, I'd like to get, before all of a sudden we get a design handed to us and say, this is what we're looking at, this is what we're gonna vote on. There's quite a few things I, I'd like to see in that, so we could do that?
Yeah, we'll prepare a summary and information packet and get that out to everybody so you know exactly where we are in the process, because we do expect at some point, fairly soon, ready, Andrea, to see a, a conceptual draw. soon, ready, Andrew, to see a conceptual drawing of what it will be. Yep, okay. Yep, we'll do it, Steve.
So I'm not sure where we were with minor hockey and the arena. Are you going to meet with them, city manager, and discuss within the next day or two, opening this up?
I think from, Counselor, like I said, I've been, my practices last few weeks that we've been closed is to, is to, you know, rally all the information together on Wednesday so we make a good decision for the weekend. Again, if things stay the way they are now, you know, one of the things I was really wanting to see the results of is when the kids first went back to school after the holidays. We've done well so far. I will talk to the superintendent tomorrow and just make sure that there's not something going on there, or he's not seen a spike in cases or something in the school. So I really believe it's a lot of the decision on what I'm doing with the superintendent of schools and what he's seeing in the school. So as of right now, I'm, you know, I'd like to continue with the planned opening again of Saturday. If we can, if we can do this, then we will. But again, I want to be clear with everybody, depending on what the information looks like with the cases of COVID, in particular how schools may be impacted, you know, it may not be the 16th either. We've really just got to keep, we've got to keep evaluating and assessing this as we go. This isn't a cut-and-dry topic. Things can change tomorrow with this.
Yeah, I don't think we should necessarily do exactly what the school does. I know in Musina, the schools are closed, but the arena is open, and they're still playing hockey. Just, I'm just throwing it up.
I know, and I just will tell you that Superintendent Canada and I discussed this on a number of occasions, and I agree with him. I just don't know that some of that effort serves not counterproductive. There's a reason the schools aren't playing sports. So the whole notion that sports are less risk going on on a municipal entity versus going on in the school, I think is not, is not really good logic. So we're really trying to operate for the, for the good of the whole here, and, you know, one of our prime responsibilities and our prime objectives is to keep the kids in school. So nobody wants to see the sports downplayed or gone away, but, but we've got to, we've got to keep the kids in school.
Well, I understand that. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I'm, at some point, though, we have to look at, the city is also a business, and operating the Lockwood Arena does generate quite a few funds for us as a city. And I think if there's people that want to use it and use it responsibly, I think that if it is used irresponsibly, I think it's well within your power to shut it down immediately. But I would just like to see the organizations given the opportunity to show that it can be done properly. Kids are congregating regardless, and I think a lot of the high school and school athletics are, there's a lot of different schools that are intermingling with each other, and minor hockey, it seems to be like it's generally kids that are based out of Augsburg. The dance centers are currently opening and they're running. So just other, other things to keep in the back of your head as we go forward at the decision like this. There are other things actually going on as well. Boy Scouts, Boy Scouts are still going on.
Yeah, I agree, Counselor. I just think, and I will say, there hasn't been one sport activity since the COVID started.
Do you know, do you, Dan?
The one that has, that has done, they've done everything they could possibly do. There hasn't been one event, there hasn't been one complaint that I'm aware of. Everyone is doing exactly as we asked them, exactly as you're supposed to do. That, that's, that really isn't the concern. The concern is, we don't know what everybody does before they get there. We don't, we don't know where people were, where they just were. You know, we know now the national statistics showed we had a similar spike right after the Christmas holidays, like we did the Thanksgiving holidays. Again, I can tell you the three or four cases that we've engaged here at City Hall have been people that, you know, just had no idea. They went someplace, they were doing something, they thought everything was fine, and then they found out, oh, this had happened to somebody and they didn't know about this. So this, this really isn't about the proper conducting of the activity. We've had great compliance, whether it's been the pop, the minor, or the Pop Warner football in the fall, they did great. The skating folks have all been great. It's just a matter of the disease being passed around out in the community, and are we providing an avenue for which it to get, to get passed on? So I, I hear all of you believing me. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not wanting to do this one, one day longer. It was, it was a tough decision right around the holidays to do, and I just feel like, again, though, we've, we've all got to have the same goal in mind right now, which is, which is, we're, hopefully, we're nearing the finish line with the discovery and the mass inoculations going on with this vaccine, that we just, you know, we just continue to band together and make the goal of getting, getting this COVID knocked out our, our goal.
I think this is a good decision for the city manager to make. Takes the politics out of it and just emphasizes the safety. And I think that's a good position for a city manager to make that judgment. And this brings us to new business. Does anyone have any new business?
I do. I noticed that, I guess it was Canton that's doing lighting upgrades, and I know we have a lot of things to work on in that, but those are upgrades for municipal buildings. I think they're grants through National Grid, and I think they're private contractors that do it, and National Grid pays for the majority of it. So it would be nice to get that going. Maybe Shane or someone could talk to National Grid and get a start on it. We probably should be taking a look at our streetlights, too.
I think that's a great idea, Stephanie Mayor Rees. I, I just would like to warn everyone that this, the police reform should be priority one for the city manager right now until that is completed. There's not sufficient city staff to help, and there's, you know, a lot going on.
Yep, and we've got, Counselor Rees, we started doing a, a street lighting survey and getting ready to make some recommendations on that, so that part's in motion. And, but, but I will, I will plug Shane into the, to the, to the other program, because I know we just didn't, I saw in Tupper Lake last year, and it was, it was a real, real big benefit to the community, and a lot of, a lot of, again, funded by National Grid materials went out.
Yeah, I would agree that police reform is a priority, but I would think that we can do multiple things at once, and that's why we delegate to other people. I also noticed that Canton's applying for a Main Street grant. Are we looking at that at all?
Add it, we'll add it to the list, Counselor.
Thank you.
I have a question. I was wondering, what's the status of some of the fleet vehicles that we've had come in? I noticed there was a pickup truck parked behind, well, at the fire department, and I was just wondering, previously, there had been discussions on the Tahoe that had come in. I was just wondering if I could get an update on the fleet vehicles, where they're going, when we can expect them later, light it up, all that good stuff.
Yeah, I'll send out a summary to everybody. The fleet vehicles, because of COVID and the production cycle being slowed way down, where we really are, we may have received about half the vehicles in 2020 that we were supposed to. So they continue to trickle in. Fire department truck came in sometime around November, sat up at the dealership for a while. We had it moved down here, but we still haven't received the license and registration because of the backlog there. So it's, it's been slowed a little bit, but I'll send everybody a summary with each of the vehicles and where they are. I guess, you know, to, to clear the record here, because we talk about a lot, the Chevrolet Tahoe that is parked here at City Hall is the fire chief's vehicle, and as such, it's staying with the fire chief. So I think for everybody who's, who's been dying to know where the Tahoe is, it didn't go anywhere, it's, it's sitting right here, and that's where it's going to stay.
I would like to see that be sent back. I don't see the necessity of that. It's a very expensive vehicle, which makes it an expensive piece, even though we're only paying half, we still pay the other half in our state taxes, and, and we need to cut waste out, not as waste.
Yes, sir. Understood.
If you want to send it back, send it back quick, because the mortgage sits, it decreases. Yes. The problem is the COVID, they get it, too. Yes. Okay.
I've got more new business. I wait for other your counselors, though.
Everyone's done?
We're on new business, right?
Yep. Go ahead.
So just to, several items, I just wanted to, to update council so you understand that we do have a lot of projects in motion at any one given time. First of all, a complete analysis of the water and sewer programs and rates. So as we discussed during the budgets, we've got to get to work, you know, identifying, again, what our, what our current cost, long-term cost is going to be so we can establish appropriate rates, in particular in sewer. So I just, I want to let you all know, that's a, that's a top priority project, that we've got the Comptroller area working on, able to bring a presentation to you. We're going to do those, obviously, separate, as they're separate enterprises, water and sewer, but that's a big one. As I mentioned earlier, working with St. Lawrence County on contaminated properties, we've used Shade Roller as the initial property to kind of work together, work out our model of how we're going to work together, collect information, and come up with a plan of attack. Our plan is to go from Shade Roller down to the Old Augsbury properties. So again, I just want, that's another, you know, significant priority on the, on the planning and development front, that we hope to make significant progress in 2021. We also will soon begin discussions with the county on property tax foreclosure of properties. As we've all discussed, we're one of only two, perhaps the only one left in New York State that still does their own property tax foreclosure process. And the benefits to that, obviously, you know, to us are not having to make the county and the school district whole every year. So again, another, another high priority project that will, you know, help with our cash flow significantly. Excuse me, I'll be working with the county administrator and the emergency services director to work out the plan for the transfer of dispatch from the police department over to St. Lawrence County. Expect a phased plan throughout the year. Finalizing the hazmat services plan to St. Lawrence County, as most of you may be aware, you know, Augsburg provides the bulk of the personnel and labor support for the hazmats services to the county. You all authorized me a couple of months ago to sign the contract. I've not done that yet, because we've not worked out the details of that. We are working on that. I'm also currently reviewing the contract for service with the Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad that was signed a little more than a year ago, to ensure that that's complete and the city is getting the services that it desires. And the rescue squad is also getting the things that they need to be successful operationally and financially. We will be working with the library. I'm going to set up a schedule where we'll have a monthly briefing with the library about where they are with their transition plan from a school board-based, or school-based library system versus the municipal-based system they are now, which has us responsible for them. And I also like to let everybody know that City Code Enforcement Officer Greg Millet has announced his retirement effective the 22nd of January. So we will be looking at the code enforcement area and how we will maintain those duties temporarily while we look to fill that position permanently. So again, those are, those are just some of the high points of the topics that the city staff is working on. Got a couple additional ones tonight talked about that will add to the list, and we'll provide updates really every month on these topics as we have appropriate progress.
Mayor, I have one more, more thing that I was looking to share tonight. I was wondering if we could develop some type for online payment. I know we accept online payments now, but I would like to see the city, because we do have some in financial troubles or financial distress, or it would help with financial planning, if we could do online payments, like a monthly, allow people to make monthly install on their taxes, whether it be water, sewer, their tax rates, where they could log on. If there's, I know other municipalities do it, they can log on. So like, say the stimulus check we just received, if that came in and somebody wanted to take that and just make a payment on their taxes when it came in, so they could use it for something like that. I was wondering if we could look into a program where we would enable, that would enable our citizens to be able to make a partial payment on their taxes if they, you know, you know, got some extra money coming in, or they want to do a small breakup, do half their water, half their sewer, make monthly payments to help with planning. Could we look into something like that? Because I think that would really benefit our community.
I think that has been discussed at City Hall. The problem is, we are working to move things over to the county with property tax jurisdictions. So it, there are some things ironed out there, and then we'll have more information.
Yeah, we're also looking at our suite of software right now. So I think this is a good opportunity, so I'm glad for the input, Counselor, on, on things that we think the community may want. And it's all stuff to keep in mind, too, as we talk about transition of some services potentially to the county. So we'll get details. We are, we're working now, I gave the Comptroller's Office a list of some communities to contact to find out what, what software systems they use, what kind of payment applications, and just how they do their payments. So we're beginning the work that, that you just discussed as well, so it'll go towards that. So we'll be, we'll have that to the list.
All right. Is that something that's being actively looked at now in other municipalities as to what they're using? So we could, like, maybe anticipate an update, like, not the next meeting, but maybe two meetings from now, the first meeting in maybe February, some type of update on that?
Absolutely. Probably last week is when I gave them the list of stuff to look at. We're currently looking at our software, so now's a good opportunity if we're going to make a change to do something, or we want additional capabilities, it's the time now to put those things together. So yeah, I'll have an update next meeting now, no matter what, because we, we're working on it right now. Some of the, some of the decisions we have to make now on utility billing are things we've got to do, you know, sooner rather than later, so this will, this will pop up pretty quick.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, I've had that mentioned to me several times, and I've, I've mentioned it before, and I was, you know, things had come up, like, you know, you can set up a separate fund in your own bank account to put money into, to set, set your taxes aside. But realistically, you know, I think anything we could do to help the taxpayer, and that would also give the city more tax flow, or more capital flow, if people are paying, instead of waiting for all their taxes to come in, if people are paying a monthly, give the city also cash flow, instead of having to maybe make anticipatory, you know, instead of having to do 2 million, maybe we'd only have to do a million, because we've already had the cash flow coming in, just looking at cash flow as well.
Is everyone's done? This brings us to items for discussion. Does anyone have any items?
Just to go back to the eight grand, I haven't read the appearance or the amount of the quarters or something like that, but I hope we take a serious look at it and the problem with hiring a consultant to write it, if it's going to generate some good revenue, we certainly have a need for it. I know the mayor's talked about some improvements down, down in the mall area, City Hall. We have the EPA application pending. I don't know what the status of that is, but if that happens, someone's got to pay for a new wall on the other building and make improvements in that area, so there's plenty of need. So I hope we could take a strong look at that, and if we have to hire a consultant, that's fine.
I would not be opposed if you need more help for that, Steve, and then you need to have someone in your office to help you also. Sounds like you just, sounds like you got a lot on your plate, Steve. Any other discussion?
Just a question, are you going to post the job for code officer?
Are you going to post the job for code officer?
Yes, Counselor Scan, and I only hesitate because any time we get a vacancy, I just want to take the opportunity to, you know, to take a look where we are with our staff, and is there some way we can do without something? We can consolidate something or coordinate something. The position of code enforcement officers is, you know, we have one. We have some training code enforcement officers in the fire department, so I just want to make sure that as we, as we go forward, we, you know, we move forward in the most efficient manner, but, but I believe the answer ultimately is yes, we will post the job announcement in the, in the very near future. It's, it'll be a difficult position to recruit, for sure.
Have you started the hiring process for your confidential secretary? I just hadn't seen a posting on that, and since it was approved in the 2021 budget, I was just wondering where we were at with that.
I just finished over the weekend updating the position description and getting all the qualifications and things that I want in there. In the next seven to 10 days, Kathy and I will be getting that posted for, for advertisement.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I got one, Mike. The issue of turn limits, I was watching that in Congress, and they had brought it up. And then I looked in our charter, we don't have... up, and then I looked in our charter, we don't have any limits on mayor or councilors, and, so I started to do some homework and go back through the minutes in some of the sources of information, and I was, I dug up the 2017 Charter Review Committee, where we had former Counselor Loffler, Storm Sealy, and we had Scott McRoberts, Fred Green, Joe Basta, and, and many other city leaders recommended term limits, and in their recommendations, I, I think, I think it was spot on, and then I, I went on to look through the minutes to see how the discussions were, and how it came about to where it was just basically buried, and I could find, oddly enough, there was, there was no, no discussion between council and the 2017 Charter Review Committee regarding those recommendations, I don't even believe they were at the meeting. I, I think this is something we should look at, and it's just one of many changes to this charter, I think that's gonna happen in 2021, or I'd like to see happen. Anybody have any thoughts?
No, that's interesting, Steve, could you get some of those notes and bring it to city staff to give a kind of a head start on what was done?
Sure, it's, I'm sure Kathy can give a, the best one is the Charter Review Committee, because these guys, I mean, I, I don't have all the names to throw out there, but there's many people that, that worked on this review, and, and I don't think many of it was even looked at, to be honest with you, and there's some things in it that I think, you know, maybe we should resurrect, I, I think we should have guidelines as far as length of terms, and quite a few other things in that charter that 2020 will bring.
Thank you, thanks, Steve, anyone else? This brings us to citizen participation, at this time, pending remotely, would like to address city council, please use the raise hand feature. No one?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, moving on, we do not have a need for executive session tonight, so at this time, I will make a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
I second, Mayor.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I forget that all the time, Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, adjourn.
Look at that, we're all in board seven.